All right, let's get started. Before we start, the City Council just met on one closed session item and there is nothing to report out at this time. So, good evening and thank you for viewing the May 1st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialisms. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute.
Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman.
President.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item that you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to make comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. So first, we have ceremonial matters. A is swearing in the new city clerk. Would Bridget Dory, an executive assistant deputy city clerk, Rhea Varley, please come to the dais? Our current and longtime city clerk Bridget Dory will be swearing in our new city clerk, Rhea Varley.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rhea Varley.
I, Rhea Varley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations. The City looks forward to continue working with you in your renewed world. Bridget, don't go anywhere. Stay there, you're not off the hook. Well, that's because you've been here for so long. All right. Oh, you've done this to me twice. I hope that I can maintain my composure. I, Bridget Dory.
Hi, Bridget Dory.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will relax and enjoy the Constitution of my retirement.
That I will relax and enjoy the Constitution of my retirement.
And the Constitution, I'll call my bucket list.
And the Constitution, I'll call my bucket list.
Whether they take me to places foreign or domestic.
Whether they take me to places foreign or domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to my pastimes.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to my pastimes.
Of baking, river lounging, sipping chai lattes.
Of baking, river lounging, sipping chai lattes.
And my new love of birding.
And my new love of birding.
That I will master the drift brake on my sporty little Subaru.
That I will master the drift brake on my sporty little Subaru.
That I will never again buy bulk bags of candy.
I will never again buy bulk bags of candy.
That fueled my colleagues.
That fueled my colleagues.
Through the afternoon for so many years.
Through the afternoon for so many years.
This is important. That I will bring my holiday cookie spread to City Hall.
That I will bring my holiday cookie spread to City Hall.
At least one more time.
At least one more time.
That I hereby forsake my steno book.
That I hereby forsake my steno book.
My shorthand dictionary.
My shorthand dictionary.
And my box of speaker cards.
And my box of speaker cards.
That I will never forget the experience of supporting.
That I will never forget the experience of supporting.
Seventy-six council candidates through thirteen election cycles.
Seventy-six council candidates through thirteen election cycles.
Resulting in hundreds of FPPC filings.
Resulting in hundreds of FPPC filings.
That I will remember my years here fondly.
That I will remember my years here fondly.
Creating agendas and minutes for over eight hundred meetings.
Creating agendas and minutes for over eight hundred meetings.
Regular, closed session, special, and mega.
Regular, closed session, special, and mega.
That as a night owl, I will never set an alarm clock again.
That as a night owl, I will never set an alarm clock again.
Nor will I come into City Hall to start my work shift at midnight.
Nor will I come into City Hall to start my work shift at midnight.
That I did through COVID.
That I did through COVID.
That I will never submit a public records request to any institution whatsoever.
That I will never submit a public records request to any institution whatsoever.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The retirement upon which I am about to enter.
The retirement upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, Bridget. Thank you for everything. Anyway, congratulations, Rhea. We look forward to working with you and thank you, Bridget, so much. I had no idea that of the, I mean, that's some serious business there. It's a lot of institutional knowledge.
Definitely.
All right. Next, there is a proclamation in recognition of the Thirty-Second Annual National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, Saturday, May 11th, 2024, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember White.
Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks such as Food for People, the Food Bank for Humboldt County, and its pantry partners in individual local communities. And whereas since 1993, the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive has collected more than 1.9 billion pounds of food nationwide, and in 2023 brought in more than 42 million pounds of food in more than 10,000 cities in all 50 states. And whereas more than 44 million people live in hunger every day in America, including more than 13 million children, and whereas Humboldt County letter carriers collected more than 43,000 pounds of food from local community members in 2023, providing critical food resources for Food for People's countywide network of 23 food pantries serving more than 21,000 Humboldt County residents of all ages. And whereas the rising cost of living, including groceries, gasoline, housing, utilities, and medical care, has had a serious impact on low-income children, seniors, and families, particularly those that are living on fixed incomes. And whereas we recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, and we appreciate community member support of the food drive. All of the food collected in each community stays in that community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby designates Saturday, May 11th, 2024, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, and ask all residents to support the food drive by leaving a non-perishable food donation next to their mailbox for their letter carrier to pick up on the second Saturday in May, dated May 1st, 2024, by our Mayor Matthews. And then the recipient will be David Reed from the Development Director for Food for People, and I believe we also have one of our letter carriers here.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews, and, oh, that is a microphone, by the way. Mayor Matthews, councilpeople, I am David Reed from Food for People.
I'm Carl Catalano. I'm a letter carrier in Arcata.
And we're really thankful to the City of Arcata, to the City Council, and our partners and our community members, especially our hard-working letter carriers, for making this food drive possible. We couldn't do it without them, of course, and our whole community. The carriers work on the front line in our community every single day. They get to know the people on their routes, and oftentimes they see firsthand the struggle that low-income families and seniors have. Their compassion and their generosity makes a big difference to the people that we serve at Food for People. Carriers work double duty on May 11th this year on Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day because they're out delivering the mail, but they're also collecting food from homes and oftentimes working longer hours to make this food drive possible. And we're grateful to work alongside them. In Humboldt County, since we started in 1995, two years after the food drive started nationally, we've collected over, actually, the community contributed over 1 million pounds of food. And last year, our community contributed a record 43,000 pounds of food. It's our largest single-day food drive in Humboldt County, and the donations that are collected in Arcata and in other communities stay in that community. They don't all just funnel to Eureka and then go back out. The timing of this food drive is very critical. We have large food drives, obviously, at the end of the year, but pantries all over the county are, those food donations that happened in December and January, November, are gone. They've already been given out. And there are people right now in our communities that are having the hardest time of their lives. Pandemic relief is gone. It went away last year. Food prices for food, food prices and gas prices and utility prices are up, and we're seeing more and more people who've never come for food assistance before coming to us. And then add to that, 60% of Humboldt County children qualify for free or low-income meals at school. So summer comes, pantries are depleted, we need more food, and that's where this food drive comes in. Food for People serves 21,000 people, 21,000 of our neighbors, every single month through 18 food programs, and more than 50% of those are children and seniors. We now have 24, since that proclamation was written, 24 food pantries that are serving neighbors all across the county. And oftentimes, they're doing double duty, helping with our senior programs and our children nutrition programs, too. Last year, Food for People distributed 2 million pounds of food to all of our communities in Humboldt. So if you want to help, those of you at home and in the audience, you're going to get this in your mailbox next week sometime, and on Saturday, the 11th, we want you to fill it with food. We're looking for things like canned soups and stews, canned meat, nut butters, peanut butter, canned fruit and juices, canned vegetables. That's what kids and seniors and families need right now. And we love glass. We love the stuff that comes in glass, but a lot of times it gets broken during food drive, so please don't contribute glass. And I can at home every day, every year, please don't contribute home canned items or expired items. We also need volunteers. It takes about 75 people on that one day to make this food drive happen, in addition to what the letter carriers do. So thank you very much for making this proclamation, and if you have anything to say.
Yeah, just like David said, we're going to start seeing these blue bags arrive in your mailboxes here in the next week or so, a couple weeks, and just like you said, fill it up. The food drive is Saturday, May 11th, but if you want to fill it up early, I'll pick it up early. If you forget Saturday and you want to, if you forget, that's okay. Fill it up and we'll take care of it. We'll get it where it needs to go. And if you don't have a bag, just put the food, you can put this anywhere you receive mail. Anywhere you receive mail, we will pick it up. On Saturday, we're looking, we start looking for these blue bags, we start looking for cans, we look for food, we pick it up, we put it in our vehicle, and we bring it back and we get it to where it needs to go. So feel free, stuff those bags, and let's make it a good food drive this year.
If people want to volunteer, who should they get in touch with?
They should contact volunteer@foodforpeople.org or go to our website.
So we just wanted to. P.O. boxes.
Yes. Go ahead.
You should be able to, either you can come to the location that he's at directly, or you can, we usually put a barrel in at the post office in the lobby, so you can fill that barrel up, bring it in there. So that's how we do the P.O. boxes. So you might not get a bag in the P.O. box, but if you don't have a bag, we'll pick up the food anyway. Any bag you use, we'll pick up.
Yeah, most post offices will have food collection bins.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, our next proclamation is celebrating Water Week, May 5th through 11th, 2024, and this proclamation will be read by Vice Mayor Stillman.
Thank you. So celebrating Water Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2024, whereas Water Week is a unique opportunity for both water professionals and the community you serve to join together in recognizing the vital role water plays in our daily lives. And as we're, you know, I'm going to drink some water, see? Because it'll be good. And it's our local water, and it is delicious. Whereas we are thankful to have easy access to clean water and recognize that many parts of the world struggle with water access, water quality, and that we can bring education awareness to these important issues. And whereas clean, safe drinking water is a finite resource that should be protected and used wisely for the benefit of generations to come. And whereas the City of Arcata's Environmental Services Department serves a key role in treating and distributing our drinking water, delivering public health protection, fire protection, and support of our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the Arcata drinking water is safe, refreshing, and meets, exceeds all state federal drinking and water quality standards. And whereas we are of the stewards of water resources, the infrastructure upon which future generations depend, helping to protect and conserve our water resources through the use of, wise use of water. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that by the City Council of the City of Arcata that May 5th through 11th, 2024 is Water Week, and the Council calls upon all Arcata residents to work together to protect our sources of water, practice water conservation, and get involved in local water issues. Please join this City of Arcata in celebrating the wonder of water, dated May 1st, 2024, signed by Mayor Matthews. And it's going to be, Chad Meadows is going to be receiving this. Are you here?
We'll get it to Chad.
Okay. He happens to be a wastewater plant operator number two at the City of Arcata. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Stillman. Our next proclamation is two firsts. So we have proclamation in recognition of National Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th, 2024, and proclamation in recognition of National Hospital Week, May 12th through 18th, and these will both be read by Councilmember Shaffer.
In recognition of National Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th, whereas one of America's greatest national assets is its nurses and the human resources they devote towards healthy and humane society, and whereas each year, thousands of nurses contribute to the health and well-being of their community. And whereas nurses give patients their time, energy, and ability providing highly skilled, safe, quality care. And whereas it has been a long tradition in our community for nurses to perform work of the highest quality for the care and health of others. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata declares that the week of May 6th through 12th, 2024, is National Nurses Week. The Council encourages all residents to acknowledge the important work done by nurses at Mad River Community Hospital, caring for the community, and to thank them for their dedicated, selfless, and compassionate efforts. Dated May 1st, signed by Mayor Matthews, and going directly into Hospital Week, where all of those lovely nurses are, May 12th through 18th, whereas the American Hospital Association celebrates May 12th through 18th as National Hospital Week with the theme "We Are Healthcare." And whereas this national healthcare event unites hospitals, healthcare workers, and communities from coast to coast, building enthusiasm and pride in the giving nature of care. And whereas nearly 5,000 American hospitals and over 5.5 million dedicated staff members serve as beacons of hope in their communities. And whereas hospitals today are multi-dimensional facilities encompassing every area of specialization with a focus on wellness and a reach that extends into the communities that they serve. And whereas this commemorative celebration demonstrates that hospitals are foundations of the community that build and nurture them. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that May 12th through 18th, 2024, is National Hospital Week in Arcata. The Council recognizes the dedication and contributions of the doctors, nurses, technicians, and staff of Mad River Community Hospital, and urges all residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technologies that make the miracle of healthcare possible in our community. Dated today, May 1st, signed by our mayor, Meredith Matthews, and we have some folks from Mad River Hospital here to accept these.
The City Council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the Council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, Council cannot discuss nor take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the Council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require Council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting under item 12. Please make your way to the podium. Raise your hand if you're on Zoom or press star nine, or if you're calling in by phone or wish to make comment. So if you wish to make comment now, stand up, get in line. We're going to take the first four in person, and then we'll go to Zoom. We're not going to go back and forth. Well, I guess we are, but, all right, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Joanne McGary, and as you all know, I come here all the time, and I'm starting to actually appreciate ceremonial matters more than I did, as time-consuming as they can be in the middle of a council meeting with other matters to discuss. I did send you an email, and I appreciate some of you recognizing and acknowledging that you received the emails, and I'll be sending you another one on three other issues that I would like to discuss. But the ceremonial matters remind me, we're talking about food, water, and medical care. And I want to remind you that you had the wisdom to pass a ceasefire resolution on March 6th, and in that resolution, you resolved that we have unrestricted delivery of humanitarian assistance and restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza. This is such an important issue. I thank you for this resolution, and it's going to hopefully make a huge difference as more and more people are recognizing that need in our community for food, water, and medical attention, and elsewhere in the world where our tax dollars are being spent. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Fred Wise. We know the notion of Machiavelli, the idea that the ends justify the means. That is, if a certain goal is beneficial, the idea is any means necessary to achieve that goal is okay. Here in Arcata, we want housing. That is our goal, but it should not take deception and distortion of truth to get us there. I've been asked many times over these last two years, does the community development director say things that are not true? Does he present inaccurate information to the Planning Commission and the City Council? My answer is absolutely yes, he does, regularly and often, dozens or hundreds of times. Last week's Planning Commission had a review of the Gateway Code in preparation of the May 14th public hearing on the general plan, Gateway Area Plan, and Gateway Code. This is what the commissioners are up against. In Tuesday's meeting, I counted 10 instances where the director actively diverted what a commissioner was saying, hijacking the conversation. There were nine times where he misspoke, to use a polite word, and there were 18 or 20 times when the director said was simply false. These deceptions act to prevent the planning commissioners from doing their job, and from the point of view of many people in the community, the director has attempted to defy the will of the City Council. Through these manipulations, the director has stood in the way of an honest review of the Gateway Code. If the Gateway Code does not fully support the Gateway Area Plan, it should not be adopted until it does, until it's reviewed and improved. It's now up to the Council to decide what to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity for public comment. During the course of this last week and a half, a group of students started a peaceful protest against the ongoing genocide funded and condoned by our own federal government that the State of Israel has enacted upon the Palestinian people. These protesters set up an encampment in solidarity with over a dozen other encampments currently occurring nationwide and in and around Siemens Hall and the quad. Almost immediately, a countywide police response disproportionate to the ongoings of the protest arrived on campus in an attempt to, at least so far as I can tell, end the protest. During the course of that evening, many students and community members gathered on the quad to see what was happening, and a clash between the students and police occurred, ending with the ultimate withdrawal of the police. I cannot speak to every action taken during the course of the protest, and I'm sure that there were actions taken that no one here would condone, but I think by and large, what occurred was a manifestation of young people engaging with their civic responsibilities. I am not going to be one bit surprised if in five or 10 years from now, if someone who was suspended for their involvement or let out of jail yesterday will be sitting on this City Council. If not this City Council specifically, these students are going to be the future community leaders in other ways. Once the disproportionate police presence left the protest, what I saw was art, music, impromptu lectures, and community building. I'm not sure what everyone in Arcata wants right now, but I think there's a broad and overwhelming consensus amongst campus that President Jackson Jr. has endangered students' faculty and staff during the recent protests due to his unfamiliarity with campus. President Tom Jackson Jr. has refused to meet with the school newspaper for five years at this point. He has refused to meet with members of the University Senate. He has refused to meet with student government. Seeing him on campus is a literal novelty, and conversations started for students. Most people I know think he spends most of his time in South Dakota, but I'm not sure if that part is true. During the protests, the.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Victoria. I'm a student at Cal Poly Humboldt. I've also served as the at-large representative for my college, for the Associated Students' Board of Directors, and I'm also a member of this community. I'm here to ask the Council to do whatever is in the city's jurisdiction to do something about President Jackson. in the city's jurisdiction to do something about President Jackson. He's unfit to run the institution, and I hope that you stand in solidarity with the CFA and the Associated Students and other organizations that are voting for his non-confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was four. We're going to go online, and then if there's still time, we'll come back. Do we have online commenters?
Gregory Daggett. Continuing with the Cal Poly protest, on Monday, I sent you an email with New York Times, two articles on that, as far as the arrest and the night before, that kind of got into the history of Arcata and the university. I just happened the first day when the protest started, I'd be walking. I always walk a couple miles every day, and just by accident, I walked by. It was probably like an hour and a half after the police were summoned there, and to tell you the truth, when I walked by, I didn't even think anything was going on because there was maybe like two people in the audience that were filming. I wasn't even sure what they were saying. I went up to Founder's Hall. I looked down, then I heard him say Gaza, so I figured out that was what the protest was about, and then I saw from the east about four sheriffs kind of heading that direction. I continued down the hill to where the campus police were, and at that point, there were eight sheriff's vehicles there, and also three Arcata Police Departments, and one was on the way. So I guess if I had Karen's number at that time, I might have called her and said, optics of this is not looking so great. So I just, I went home and I called, you know, somebody, and I just said, this is going to kind of probably get out of hand, and that's sort of what it did. Continuing through the week, I think that, you know, they closed the campus, then by the weekend, then I saw Arcata police there on Saturday and Sunday. I thanked Karen for verifying that too, but I don't know whether we wanted to get involved with that. It was just basically standing there in their intersections and trying to keep people away from the college, and so I think this university has to set high standards, and I think they ultimately failed on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My friends call me Daniel. I once went to Kashmir and lived with a guru there, built a temple there. Islam killed the two people that were living there. Arcata is where I was left from. I found the Arcata Plaza, and found the statue, and the border left the reason the statue is gone. This is my book, A Little brochure, Killing the Friendly Indians, 1850, 1860. But what I come here to say is, if you need a liar, you need a good liar. Who's a better liar, Donald Trump or George Santos? And I say George Santos. And the reason I say that is because years ago, there was a woman who had the seven deadly sins. Jesus took them away, the seven deaths. She was the first woman, right? But Mary Magdalene was not a woman. Mary Magdalene was a man. And so you've got all these religions fighting over not the truth, because in Petra was the city of the sacred city. It's online, you can see it. And as Jesus got to Petra, he was safe, because King Herod had killed the princess and her son in his last days. This princess that walked all around the city was dead, and as Jesus came out of the city on the mule, like he went in the donkey, then he got to Petra and he was safe. So it's a big lie. You've got Islam who has this holy book, and it's all about Petra. All the early mosques point to Petra. It's on YouTube, The Sacred City. And then you've got Islam that's turned his back on God. They believe that the Temple Mount is that and nothing else. They won't turn around and look. And you have the Christians who believe this lie. Mary Magdalene was the only one that was at the crucifixion and the resurrection, and you needed someone to say, look in the sky. I believe in magic. The stardust, we're all stardust, can be disappeared. Jesus didn't die-
Thank you for your comment. All right, with that, I am going to close oral communication, and that'll bring us to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for a separate discussion. A is approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of April 3rd, 2024. B is approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of April 16th, 2024. C is approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of April 17th, 2024. D is bi-weekly report on disbursements. E is adopt resolution number 234-46, authorizing the execution of a standard agreement with the California Department of Housing and Community Development for $3 million in Moore grant funds to implement a mobile home rehabilitation program. Adopt resolution number 234-44, authorizing application for and receipt of the Office of Planning and Resources Adaptation Planning Grant for Climate Adaptation Planning. G, adopt resolution number 234-45, authorizing a grant application to the Home Investment Partnership Programs for up to $1,500,000 for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program, and authorize the mayor to sign the Home Standard Agreement. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I was asked by a couple constituents to remove item E and G.
Okay, anybody else? Any member of the public who wished to remove any items from the consent calendar? Okay, can we get a motion for items A, B, C, D, and F?
I would move-
I will second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Vice Mayor Stillman, second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and so Kimberly, we're start with item E?
Yeah, I think that they just wanted to convey they're very grateful that we are moving forward on this very important housing and community development grant, the Moore Grant, for the Mobile Home Rehabilitation Program, and also item G, which is authorizing a grant for application for home investment partnerships for $1.5 million for the Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program. So if they just wanted to be sure to give us thanks. So that was it. Thanks.
That's wonderful. Did you have something you wanted to say? Do we have any public comment on items E or G?
Just a clarification. We will need to take public comment on each of them individually and vote on them individually once they're pulled off consent.
Okay, let's-
I'll make a motion for item E.
Second.
Okay. Item by Councilmember Schaefer, second by Councilmember White. Any public comment on item G? No, okay. Somebody want to make a motion on that?
I have to vote on it. You first.
We have to do-
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, G.
So I would move for adoption of item G.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Vice Member Stillman, a second by Councilmember Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, I'd like to mention that we did receive emails on these two items appreciating that we were going to continue it and made sure that individuals in our community would be continued to be in their homes.
All right, let's move on to new business, and this is adopt resolution number 234-43, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata waiving the 180-day waiting period for a CalPERS annuitant, Danette DeMello, to begin post-retirement employment, Government Code Section 7522.56 and 2122-24. I guess this is what happens when we don't make someone have a swearing out. They get to, they have to come back. Can we, can we do a staff report?
We should have sworn her out. She would have appreciated that.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilwomen. Kara Vink, the Human Resources and Administrative Services Director for the City of Arcata. Danette DeMello was the Assistant City Manager for the City of Arcata since 2006, and she retired effective April 12th of this year. And the City Manager's Office is seeking approval to allow Danette DeMello to enter into post-retirement employment with the city as an extra help retiree annuitant prior to the CalPERS 180-day waiting period. The waiting period is required by the Public Employee Pension Reform Act. In order to get the waiting period waived, the council needs to approve a resolution. This is necessary because there are pending projects that have critical deadlines that need to be finished, and the existing staff does not have, due to their workload, does not have the time or the knowledge in order to complete those projects. One project being a revamp of our personnel rules and standards, which has to be completed prior to July 1st of this year. So it is recommended that the council adopt resolution number 23443, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata waiving the 180-day waiting period for a CalPERS annuitant, Danette DeMello, to begin post-retirement employment, Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21224.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions from the council?
No, I mean, if she wants us to do this, then we, I don't know how she's ever going to retire, but I'm happy to go forward with it.
How long is it? Do you know how long the time period that she's going to be, just until it's done?
Well, there's, just until it's done, and there's one additional project that I didn't mention.
Could we make sure that we have an official swearing out of Danette?
Yes.
When this is over.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Anybody on Zoom? Sorry. All right, I'll bring it back to the council.
Okay, I'll adopt or make a motion to adopt resolution 234-43, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata waiving the 180-day waiting period for a CalPERS annuitant, Danette DeMello, to begin post-retirement employment, Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 212224. Is that all we need?
Well, I would second it and would say that this is not an uncommon thing, that we often have the opportunity of bringing back a staff that is, maybe not you, but nevertheless, looking at Bridget, but staff that is very competent in what they've been doing to assist in continuing some time with us to make things work. So I would second the motion, because I think it's a good thing.
Wonderful. So we have a motion by Councilmember White, and a second from Vice Mayor Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, let's approve the summer city council meeting schedule for 2024. Can we have a staff report from the city manager?
Sure. We just wanted to bring before you, your June 19th meeting would fall on a national holiday, Juneteenth. By way of your Muni code, you're not allowed to have a council meeting on that date. So we have suggested, based on previous conversations with you, in council meetings, the date of June 12th. So you would have, still have two meetings in June, June 5th and June 12th for the month of June. At the same time, it's just kind of an open opportunity for council members to talk if there were any other summer conflicts that we might want to consider as we just set the summer schedule. It's not uncommon for most elected boards around the county to take one or two meetings off during the summer to just simply accommodate vacation and a little lighter load. And as long as staff is aware of that ahead of time, then we can group things around contracts and procurement around those dates. So just to check in on that while we set the June 12th date.
I will be headed to the Democratic National Convention in Chicago as a delegate, and so I will be missing the August 21st meeting.
Was there anybody else on council that wanted to consider moving any dates in July, August?
I think there were other dates that I saw that that we wouldn't be meeting.
Are you thinking of the-
Yeah, like July 3rd.
The interviews?
Or, oh, that.
Those, yeah.
Mostly I've just been sending dates that you will, extra dates that you will be meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we ever decided on a time for that May 9th meeting. Like, I have HWMA at 5:30, so-
It'd be lovely to- Oh, that is a good point. Yeah, you have a quick close session on May 9th. It looked like the majority of you could meet at 4 o'clock?
If everybody-
Do you want to check that? 9 o'clock?
Then 4 would be great.
Yeah.
I can do 4 or 7, and then I have to run up and talk about, talk trash.
Crude or Pam Derby indicated probably only be half hour, 45 minutes.
So that's going to be at 4. I just want to make sure that I have them, so I don't float around and realize that, oh.
Yes. Once we confirm these, somebody will send out calendar invitations, so-
We will, yes, but it'd be May 9th at 4 o'clock would be the other one.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
What else?
I mean, July 3rd is a little weird. I don't know. You know, I know we took the 4th of July meeting off last year, because I think it was right by there too, but that would be then two in a row, then we'd be really taking some chunks off. But we're also like having a lot back to back to back at like the end of May and the beginning of June, so.
I have a huge event on July 4th, so I'm more than happy to not have a meeting the night before that, so, but I will if I need to.
Yeah, right now you will have meetings on the 9th, the 15th, a couple of you on the 20th, all of you on the 22nd of May, and then June 5th and June 12th. So you do have a lot of meetings in the next six weeks.
I think that's enough together time for us. And the 29th, right?
I missed what you said.
Three weeks in a row.
I know that one, okay. What else did you say we weren't going to do?
You won't be doing Juneteenth. You won't be doing June 13th.
And that I have that one.
You'll be in charge June 5th and August 21st, Madam Vice President.
June-
Vice Mayor.
Madam President, that sounds really good.
And the delegates, getting ready for, getting ready for the convention. All right, do we have any public comment on our meeting schedule? All right, cheers. Do we have a motion for-
Whoever makes the motion, would they be very specific?
I would move that we create a summer schedule that would have us not meeting on Juneteenth and July 3rd and observance of 4th of July, and to move the Juneteenth meeting to June 12th instead, and then just cancel the July 3rd meeting. So moved. I will second that.
Fantastic. We've got a meeting by Councilmember Schaefer, a second by Councilmember Atkins Salazar, and then Vice Mayor Stillman will get calendar invites for all those little meetings that we have in May. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, we're moving on to item C, discuss options for securing alcoves in commercial districts. Can we get a staff report from community development-
We can. Yeah, I'm going to sit in on this one.
All right, cheers.
So it is going to be a short presentation. This item is coming before you. The Planning Commission had an application and has had several people, I think, contact members of staff and commission, interested in doing commercial, what we'll call scissor gates for short, their alcove enclosures in and around town. I think the council is fairly familiar with the issue around enclosures and alcoves, the concern that business owners have raised around people sleeping, loitering, drinking, leaving behind trash, including lots of different items that none of us want to pick up, and thank you to our staff that do pick those up every single day. And so we've had an increase in interest around these. So when the plan, when this particular one came before the Planning Commission, they had a pretty robust conversation. I think most of you watched that meeting, so I won't go into real detail on their conversation, but they recognize that there is a real need for businesses to be able to protect and their staff to be able to come in safely in the morning, and yet there is some aesthetic concern around especially those businesses that may not be open, kind of standard business hours, that would then potentially have these commercial gates closed. So I just have a few pictures that we will run through to show, you know, some of the commercial gates, a couple of them here in Arcata. Up at the Hutch Market, it's not, it's open, but you can see at the top of the photo, right under the awning, they do have roll-down doors that go down that are just locked at night as one option. We have kind of a gated that stays, you know, partially is permanent, and then the gate opens during the day. This one is sort of newer in the downtown area, the Haberdashery. This is kind of a standard scissor gate. They also sometimes, you know, come in black, which fades a little bit further. This, we don't have in Arcata, but it is commonly seen, you know, throughout other areas. We do have, I will just say, a lot of alcoves in and- We do have, I will just say, a lot of alcoves in and around town, Valley West, Sunny Bray, downtown area. Why are there so many pictures? So I just have a few others that, you know, have expressed at some point in the past interests in potentially blocking those. So, I mean, these are just general pictures of alcoves. So what the, oh, where's my thing? Okay, here we go. So just sort of in short, the Planning Commission talked about a few things, hours of operation, when would gates be opened or closed? I think, you know, one of the comments by Planning Commissioner Tegney was that, you know, he felt really comfortable approving the particular application that was before them. It was a business that is open seven hours, seven days a week, at least some hours of the day, not full operational hours, but that he would have been very uncomfortable approving the same thing for, say, a bar restaurant that was closed all day and didn't open until 5 o'clock at night. So they had pretty lengthy discussion about open and closed, sort of hours, emergency services, access, general design and aesthetics of alcove enclosures, multi-tenant sites, how do you manage sites that may have multi-tenants in them, considerations, should there be for inside and outside of historic districts in town, and then alternatives to gates such as lighting, cameras, music, other kinds of hardscape. I think your Planning Commission is certainly happy to delve in and try to create some design standards and code around this, but before they really started to get into the weeds, just wanted a general direction from the council to hear your thoughts before they started that work. So, I mean, that really is kind of the long and short of it, but I'm happy to answer questions or talk in more detail about their discussion.
All right, well, this should be a pretty robust conversation. I know I have a lot of feelings, and I did appreciate the conversation that the Planning Commission had. So who would like to kick us off?
I'll start.
Yeah, I did watch both of those, and I was a little bit apprehensive in approving the first one because then it sets precedent, and then how do you tell the next business who wants to have a gate, no. However, as one of the Planning Commissioners had pointed out, while they're there for a design review, the issue really is systemic, and that maybe that's what needs to be addressed. That's not a Planning Commission's job, that's ours. So I just want to put that out there. I think that there's some various opportunities, or not opportunities, choices of the gates as our city manager had pointed out. I don't, I wasn't even aware that there was any of those type gates at the Hutch. I loved the one at the building, it was aesthetically pleasing. I think that there are some designs that will be more conducive to not looking like a prison, which is one of my concerns. We want, the issue is that it's a safety issue, and of course, the owners and the employees don't want to have to step over bodies, none of us want to. And then having to arouse people who have been, you know, sleeping, you know, not everybody can wake up without, it's a safety issue. And then, you know, we want Arcata to be a place that people want to come and feel safe to shop, and nobody wants to see human excrement, or garbage, or any of those other things that we are having to commonly deal with. So for me to say to these folks, well, we don't want to have scissor gates because it doesn't look nice, we need to offer them an alternative because we have, what are they going to do? I think that some of the concerns about the hours could be mitigated, although we don't have Main Street anymore, we do have our community ambassadors, perhaps they could get a set of keys, or maybe we could build like, you know, another association or sorts that would be able to have keys to those businesses that have, you know, are opening, say, for dinner hour, or, you know, for example, a couple of the businesses around the plaza don't open on the farmer's market day until closer to 11:00 or noon. We don't want to have, you know, this thriving, robust farmer's market and look around and everybody has their scissor gates, you know, on or near the plaza. So, yeah, those are some of the things that I feel like I had kind of geared in on. It's tough. I know that, you know, even out in Valley West, you know, Jitterbean has a scissor gate, and it's, I believe it's newer, I think I would have noticed it had it been there before. And a lot of other businesses, you know, in, on the plaza, downtown, out in Valley West, I'm hearing a lot of conversation about what can they do to keep their area clean so that they, you know, people want to shop. So, yeah, I'll just pass it to my colleagues. Thanks.
Well, I have scissor gates on a building of mine, and I want to hear everyone else's comments, and then I have a list of things I wanted to talk about. Do you all want to, you know, get into it? Well, I thought one of the things was interesting, I was talking to a new business owner, and I said, oh, you've got scissor gates. And he goes, well, why wouldn't I? And I said, well, first of all, did you go through the Planning Commission design review? And he said, no, I don't see why I would. So you have people that think it's just sort of a given, and his picture wasn't up there, but he's a relatively new business. So I thought it was, that was an interesting thing. I thought Cash Bujah did a brilliant idea for where Carriage House is now, when he put in these doors that fit back, so the alcove is never open to sleeping at night because they close the doors and then lock them and they go away. And I think in there are places where you could do that, that wouldn't be a bad idea. That building was a natural for it because it has a very wide opening, so you could actually stack the doors on either side. But another thing I think we should be looking at, too, is not just this alcoves, et cetera, we have many properties that are fenced in their properties. And we have over here, the sandwich shop, they've completely enclosed their building. Across, next to Caravan Dreams, they put a whole fence system around them. And so we're seeing other things actually happening, including gates inside of windows so that you don't have, I just came back from Boston, and a friend of mine said, I said, oh, you even have, you have these gates inside of the windows, and this is a really tony area. She goes, yes, don't have break and grab. So I think that's something that is also happening here. We see that in many of the stores at night, they close the gates within their window, and they're pushed back, and you don't see them in the daytime. I realize the cameras and lights are something, if you're, if you're down on Inn Street, I think it's Inn, they have a light down there that flickers like this constantly, constantly, which is very disruptive for someone that would want to sleep, and that might be a possibility, we could get those kind of lights operating, but they would be somewhat disturbing, and maybe that's good, maybe it's not. But I do think, I think it's for people, businesses normally can't afford to put these gates in, it's the property owners they have to work with. If you go through design review, the property owner has to do the presentation, they have to pay the fees, and it's sizable. So I'm just thinking about the future, and I think we're in a situation that we haven't been in in a long time, and we'll probably go out of it somewhere. But at this point, we are in a different kind of a context in the world, and I think that this is what we're seeing happen, and that's why, when you think that we have over, what, 3 million, we're under 3 million housing units in the United States, we're going to have a lot of people that are going to be sleeping somewhere else other than in an apartment or their house. And I think that this is, we know that the ambassadors, they can't pick up certain things if there's certain things on the ground, they have to call city staff to come and do it because they aren't allowed to touch it. So anyway, those are, I'm just thinking that we're in a different place and different time, and we may have to look at things differently than we have in the past. Oh, I was telling a friend, and it's true, if you're in Barcelona, I've told someone this, and they said, oh, it must be a really dangerous place, but it's been like this for, I'd say, over 20 years. They have solid doors that come down and lock in front of all their glass windows. And when they leave their store just for 20 minutes to deliver flowers or something, they put it down almost halfway. In the morning, when they come in, they pull them up to a certain level so they can open the door and get in, and then they do whatever they do before they open, and then they open the whole way. And when you're there in Barcelona and you're going from one area to another, they're all well-lit, people are just walking along, talking, it's not like it's anything unusual. And we just don't have, happen to have that. But we do know, anytime a window gets broken, when I have the garden gate, which is now probably over 10 years ago, we would save money every month, I mean, every year, we put aside $400 because that's how much it costs to replace a window. Now it's much more, and also since the pandemic, it's much harder to get glass. So those are comments I have.
Thanks, Alex.
So I just, I want to address the systemic problem just for a minute to talk, just to say that, yes, we do have serious systemic issues, and we, as a council, have been really working to do our best to try to help solve those in our area, and to be compassionate, and to provide services for folks, and I believe we will continue to do that. Unfortunately, the problem is bigger than Arcata, and so we've, we've just had a lot of business owners that are really frustrated, as been, you know, has been described. So I think this is a good compromise, it's not, I don't think any of us think it's ideal. So I support doing that. Some of the ideas that I, thoughts that I have are, when the Planning Commission goes to work on it, would definitely be regarding times and styles. If, if there's a business that wants to do this, I think that there should be some type of set hours on it, a reasonable time, because it's, it's not a good look to have half the plaza closed down possibly, or stores for a large part of the day or week, so, you know, there would need to be times, I think, time set on it, and also style considerations for those. I think the roll-down ones, that's just a great canvas for graffiti, so probably not the best choice, in my opinion. And so those are, you know, I support the idea about doing this, and I do hope that it is just a season, and maybe some problems will be solved, and more people will have the resources that they need, and those gates can remain open.
And just to kind of speak a little off that, again, systemic issue piece, too, and just the reason that, you know, we're working on housing and all that, safe camping, safe parking, all of those different things, it's important. And I would say, then going to that, that I would actually prefer something like a scissor gate to like generally hostile architecture, because that's just, I don't know, you know why you're putting the gate up, just put the gate up, don't put a bunch of boulders and mist and music, it's just, it's like a way to like make it look like, oh, no, we're not trying to kick people out. And so like, if you're going to create some form of hostile architecture, just do it. And I think the gate is probably cheaper for businesses than if we say, well, no gates, but you can put boulders and you can put mist, and I just keep it, keep it simple. And I was talking to some, some business owners on the plaza at least, too, and that kind of thinking, you know, if we say, okay, I don't really think that the floodgates will open after, you know, talking to some of these folks that just, there's a lot about like the directionality of the plaza, and I was talking to a business owner like on the west side, and he said, this side, you know, definitely people I think like to sleep on here more because the rains usually come from this way, and then they get the sun in the morning, and it's, all has to kind of do with which part of the plaza you're on, and also kind of looking at some of those sizes of those alcoves. And perhaps, again, that's going to be Planning, Planning Commission nitty-gritty, but, you know, depending on the size of the alcove, that maybe that might not be, you know, a gate might not be appropriate for a certain, you know, minimum size, basically, in that the deeper back these alcoves go, obviously it might be more appropriate to have a gate. And I strongly agree with the hours open piece of it, there are a couple of places where if you're walking around the farmer's market at 10:00 AM, they are gated up, and it's, you know, even if the business is not open, and this could, you know, be maybe another way to, to encourage some of these businesses to open early on those like big event days, too, but especially for bars or restaurants that might not open later until the day, can be kind of off-putting to go shop and be in those commercial areas. And so I would want to see some standards just around the timing of those gates being opened in the morning, and whether that, yeah, is working with the community ambassadors or working with building owners, having businesses partner up even, or one business takes it one month. I mean, I'm sure our local business community could, could work together within that as well, so. And, yeah, I think that was kind of my main piece on that, so that's what I have.
Well, excellent. It sounds like we're mostly in agreement. I definitely feel like, I mean, I was at the farmer's market last Saturday, and, you know, it's, it's kind of jarring to look around at all these open stores and then have a scissor gate, so definitely like a set time that they are open every morning, I think would have to be, you know, written in. You know, I go around and talk to businesses, and the things that, the main things that they want to see on the plaza is lighting, better lighting, brighter lighting. So that's something that I will always try to push for, and just more of a presence, you know, on the plaza of, you know, people keeping things in check. But, I mean, yeah, I definitely think some kind of design review to make sure that they're aesthetic, but, yeah.
So could I ask a question? What Stacy was talking about, you know, this hopefully will be a season and will slowly but surely resolve our issue of the housing crisis. Would there be, could we put a time limit of like, you know what I'm asking? Like, could we?
You mean, give it a year, and then you have to take it down?
Well, I mean, you know, as Sarah had pointed out, if you go all out, it's going to be rather expensive, and so who's going to want to invest if it's going to have to be removed later? But a scissor gate isn't going to be quite as expensive. And I'm not thinking a year, I think it's going to probably be longer than that. But like, let's say down the road that it does not necessitate that we have those, could we have them removed? That was something that one of the commissioners had brought that up.
Big investment for a business to take to say, no, in five years, going to have to take it out. I think that that's probably not.
I would say typically in land use law, if you approve something in a moment, it runs with the land. So if you revise, you know, this ordinance or this design standard in five years from now, projects from that point moving forward. You know, I think there is a lot of ways that we can work with our businesses in a certain area, whether it's Sunny Bray or Valley West, or the downtown, or North Town, to say, hey, you know, we really want to try to set a community standard, but I think we would be, we would fall short of being able to require removal, especially after that kind of investment.
Yeah, I just remember one of the commissioners had mentioned that, and it seemed like that would be such an investment, who's, and then my, my other thought is, you know, opening up the floodgates, we're saying that's not likely to happen, or that, that was something, I think, that Sarah said. My concern is that it is affordability, not everyone can afford one of these, so your neighbor puts one up, then those that were looking for a place to sleep are just going to come to your place, and so forth, and so forth, and it's going to move on down. And I know that, you know, it's, it's bigger than Arcata, this problem is, and yet I see that we do have a solution sitting right in front of us, which is safe camping. You know, instead of making it so it's so uncomfortable for an unhoused person to sleep in these alcoves, maybe we could find a safe place for those unhoused to sleep and where they're not resented, and safe camping would be that solution. So I'm just looking at the systemic and ways to, you know, be kind to those who have nowhere to sleep, instead of making it uncomfortable, like with bright lights, and, you know, I just, I'm looking for some kind of balance there, and I think that's all I have.
Go ahead, Alex.
So I just wanted to mention that one time, you know, I've traveled over my life a lot, and so one time I was in this one area in Paris, and they had the roll-down doors like they have up in North Town, and they were being, they were being painted into scenes. So I can understand why the liquor store wanted to put those on, because you could break the window and you could take a lot of liquor out. And so I think that, you know, having murals is another way of looking at it. Also, gates are reversible. And so when I was looking at the gates for my building downtown, I don't have a historic building, but I figure when you have a building, you want to be able to always look at reversibility. And so the gates are reversible. They were expensive gates because we wanted to make sure that they looked as good as possible, they weren't shiny, they were black. And I think that our downtown has a lot of history, and so we have to look at what's reversible and not permanent. And that, that was something I wanted to mention. And also, we need to have more people living in the downtown. And if, that's always been a goal, the city has had a goal of having more people living in the downtown. So when I built my building on the corner, I have, I have four apart, well, actually I have five apartments there, we have one apartment down the street, but if we could figure out how to get more housing with. within our downtown, then we have more eyes on what's going on. That was something that downtowns have always talked about, Main Street, you have to have more eyes, and then you have less, things happen. Because if you have a downtown where everyone just leaves at a certain time, and then they come back the next day at a certain time, it's very empty. And that's how Arcata was when I first moved here. There was nothing going on in the morning or downtown. It was extremely empty. So I think our goal, one of our goals should be to encourage as much housing as we can get downtown.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it up for public comment, and then we'll come back for more discussion.
Thank you, City Council. My name's Noah Lefland. Yeah, I know that the city's considering which of these measures that you'll allow for private businesses in order to protect front alcoves from vagrancy, litter, and overnight camping. And most of my concerns were addressed by each of you. But the big one is that you have these businesses that are dealing with vagrancy, and then they put up a scissor gate to deal with their own issues of safety. And then those unhoused folks will simply move to another business. And now it's another business that needs to deal with it. And so instead of having a solution that works, you now are creating additional costs for more businesses as it's sort of a moving issue. And so I agree with Councilmember White that it is a super systemic issue. And it seems like, I, I just hope that with all the attention being given to this measure, which I appreciate, because I think it's really complex, that there are additional, you know, attention and focus being brought to try to alleviate some of the underlying issues. So, thank you very much.
You, thank you.
Hi, my name's Andrew. And my concerns just being that, you know, I've been in the plaza many times at night during the day, and I've seen the overnight camping firsthand. And I was just curious how overnight camping is currently being enforced, and if that is enforceable. I know that you mentioned that, like, that could be a solution. And also just kind of posing that, I don't know how putting these fences in place or other met, other forms like boulders, like you said, is really gonna solve the issue, like the larger issue of having unhoused people in Arcata. And I think that having a, you know, accessible spot for camping is a far better solution than any form of scissor gate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Fred Wise. Currently in the gateway code, scissors gates are allowed on every building, new buildings or existing buildings. This is something the Planning Commission is looking at. They've requested direction from you. So to do that, I imagine you'd have to have a separate meeting with just the three of you. It wouldn't be appropriate for the five of you to discuss something that was going on in the gateway area. Obviously, this is a complex issue. I'm not saying I have any solution. It was pointed out by the applicant on, at the plaza building, and by Councilmember Stillman, that gates are nice and that is, as she said, a reversible change to the building. It doesn't harm, or permanently harm a historic building, and can be taken out. And in terms of requiring scissors gates to be open during standard business hours, I think that's a difficult situation. Businesses have winter hours sometimes. Businesses can be closed entirely for one day of the week. It was brought up about having a ambassador being able to open a gate. You could have a master key. It would be required, that would open up all the gates and have either an ambassador or an employee shared, the cost of the employee could be shared by the businesses that had the gates. Even today, in the winter hours are from, starting at 11:00 AM, as was mentioned, you don't wanna have the scissors gates closed when it's, when the farmer's markets open on the plaza. In the building on the plaza, Arcade Artisans has the scissors gate. As I understand it, the, or excuse me, Caravan of Dreams has a scissors gate. As I understand it, Arcade Artisans did not want a scissors gate. And even though they pretty much have the same issues. So perhaps Councilmember Stillman can talk about this a little bit. In terms of what's called hostile architecture, it doesn't have to be boulders or awful things. It could be benches with a slope, so that people can't sleep on them. It can be other kinds of seating, it could be planter boxes. They can also be objects that are put out at night and taken in during the day. All this, I'm not saying is easy, but there are alternatives to just ugly hostile architecture there. Good luck. It's a difficult situation for everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm reminded of Desmond Tutu's quote about, we've gotta stop just pulling people out of the river and go upstream and find out while they're falling in. And oftentimes, the solutions that we create in our community on issues such as this are Band-Aid solutions, and they aren't dealing with the real heavy-duty wound that's festering. And the systemic reason why scissors gates are needed is something that we don't deal with really well, in a really holistic manner. And again, I go back to a task force to look at these kinds of issues, so that scissor gate issues will become moot, mute, or moot, moot. And I think also there's a strategic arts plan for the city, and they're putting out proposals and, you know, maybe creative thinking in terms of art, such as murals on rolling gates and other such things. And I guess my final thing is, I read a study one time about broken windows. And if you fix a broken window in communities, it's the broken window theory, crime goes down, lots of things improve or aren't as bad, because you are doing that facade maintenance that I talked about earlier. But let us be the creative Arcata. And scissors gates are just so cookie cutter. And let's really think of other ways to deal with these issues. And people will flock here to learn about how creative and effective we are. And there are really ways to do it. But the systemic issue is what we really need to deal with, okay? We got these Band-Aids that are wearing thin. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Gregory Daggett. I would point out that, you know, there's, there's some other issues about, about this too. It's, I, just one of my walks, you're getting a lot of your huge plate windows that are being broken. You know, there's one at Rita's, the whole thing's shattered. The rock shop next to it has two, H Street, H Street, there's, it's boarded up with plywood. So, I mean, the scissor gate isn't gonna address that problem. So I don't, I don't know what, the only thing I could think of is a camera on the, on that, whether that would be a deterrent. But, I mean, I really feel so bad for these businesses from the standpoint of what they're dealing with in the cleanup. But when these windows go out, I mean, I, I have no idea how much money, but I know even in the past, the bicycle shop in North Town, they lost a whole bunch of them there. I don't know if they lost bicycles at the standpoint there. There's a scissor gate on half of it there. So it's like, I don't know what the, the deal is with the, it's kind of like vandalism. I don't think it is necessarily even trying to break in and steal, steal anything. You see that probably on the bike shops, and their backpacking and things like that. I would say that the only thing I've seen, like in Miami for the last 10 years, when I go back for Design Miami District, you know, it's a kind of a pretty nice place, where they got hundreds of millions of dollars vested into the buildings, top architects, you know, they got fashion, they have restaurants. And what, the way they deal with it there is, which I don't think we have the money for, is they just hire a lot of young guys that need jobs from the Miami area. They have like a polo shirt on, they have like a uniform, they have walkie-talkies. And they're just there day and, and night. And you have kind of police that are sort of on the roads, and if there's any problem, you know, they're going to basically, you know, call in the police. So that's a way, you know, you don't have scissors gates there, because they're doing it a different way. I would imagine even probably when they closed the, the doors at 2:00 in the morning, that they've designed some, some like, you know, Cartier, you know, the jewelers, they got too big of an investment. There's probably some very sophisticated like gates that you don't ever see in the day, that are just, you know, invisible. So in our case, I, you're gonna have to have like cameras. I mean, this glass thing is really bothering me, because, you know, insurance rates are going up. People are like losing their insurance. So it's like, you feel sorry for the landlord, you feel, you feel sorry for the, the tenant, because when the windows go, you know, you can, your rates are gonna go up, even if they have coverage on it. Or, I mean, we've had insurance cancellations, number one and four in California. Top insurance companies aren't insuring anymore.
Thank you. Anybody else have in-person public comment on this agenda item? Do you have anybody online?
We do not have any online for public comment.
All right, let's bring it back to the council. So can I just?
Oh, I just, so I wanted to say about Caravan of Dreams. There was a time that worked for a fairly long time, and I agreed to it. But she found a homeless woman that could live in the doorway, and she kept it clean. And every morning at 11:00, by 10:30, she would be out of there. But she'd be there at 4:00. So you have a homeless person that kept everything orderly and so forth. Nobody else could be in there. They had an argument once, she was gone for a while, then other people came, and then eventually they worked it out and she came back. So what happened after, I don't know where she moved to, but what happened more recently for the owner of the Caravan of Dreams, is that when she would, she would have things that were in the doorway, that she'd have a box there. Everyone would wanna pick up the box and bring it inside. She'd have, no, you can't. I'm waiting for the city to come and clean all this stuff up, because the ambassadors couldn't. And so I, you know, she's a long-term tenant. When I built the building, and like 21 years ago, she's been there. And she's dealt with the things that we've had. And I know she has restrictive hours, and I'll talk to her about that. But it was like a solution. And, and I know, basically downtown, the majority of our businesses are owned by women, and they're the ones that are handling things and dealing with it on a regular basis. And I, I just, I wanted to just say that. And I still think that you, City of Eureka, I talked to the city manager when I was starting to deal, having to deal with the gates for Caravan of Dreams. And during COVID, they got into a, a program where they would look at the scissors gates. You can look in Eureka and you'll see what they have. They would have the building inspector, someone from design review, the fire department, and they would look at these different places, and they helped pay for gates to be installed. So they, they didn't have issues. They have a couple of places that they maybe need gates now, because they do have issues. But nevertheless, I thought that was an interesting way that they decided to deal with helping their businesses. And in Arcata, we don't, you know, we're, we really think about our aesthetics and how we think about how things look. And of course, I've always thought about that myself. And this is a last resort. And I think for a lot of people, they feel like it's the last resort. And it's gonna change. We're gonna have a, maybe in 10 years from now, five years, we get more people living downtown, we have more people living in our community. Things will change.
Well, I like to use the word "and," not "or." I feel like we're often presented with things as if it's a choice. We can, you need to fix a systemic problem or use scissors gates. It's "and." We have been working, this council has put so many of our community's resources, and we will continue to do what we can into creation of housing, of the safe parking. Councilmember Schaefer pointed those out. We have been open to the idea of safe camping. It's been, you know, we've talked about it. We need a viable partner. As a small city, we cannot be fully responsible for that. We need, we need a viable partnership. So absolutely, we are going to continue to work on those. But they are big systemic problems. And so in the meantime, yes, we will use Band-Aids when we need to use Band-Aids. And if you want to call this a Band-Aid, then I, I feel like the business owners have been extremely patient, and they, they have, you know, we have, we continue to work with them. We continue to work with, you know, with our ambassadors and other folks. So to me, it's an "and." And, and, and that's how I see it.
So I thought that you were gonna share, Alex, about the Eureka program. So here's an "and." In addition to that program, there was another program where they would get coffee and some bagels, and they would go to those alcoves where these unhoused folks were. And part of the deal was, you have to clean up, you have to be ready at a certain time, your area needs to be sparkling, and we send you off with a coffee and a bagel. So, I mean, it worked for a good time out in Old Town. I don't know if they're still doing it, or maybe it stopped working, but I love that idea. If I was to give some direction to the Planning Commission, I think that it's really important that we talk about the hours of operation. And I love the idea of the roll-down mural. I think that sounds really aesthetically pleasing for me. And, and then, yeah, the hours, and maybe work something out. I think as Sarah pointed out, businesses will work together and can to maybe, you know, this weekend, you're gonna go and open early and unlock this master key for everybody, so it looks like we're all open for business and we don't look like a prison. So there's some ideas there, too. That's all I have.
Are there any buildings on the plaza that are historic buildings that cannot have gates?
Well, we don't have any outright progress into scissors gates anywhere in the city. Our code simply does allow them. But, and there are certain historic areas, and then there are certain designated areas, such as plaza-facing businesses, that do require design review for that. So I think to the point of, is this a question about gateway? Right now, you're talking about a policy citywide. So that would include gateway, downtown, North Town, you know, potentially. If you wanted to do something different in a different zone, then that might preclude many of you from participating in certain areas. But right now, this would be direction to the Planning Commission on all areas. So, so right now, it's not prohibited anywhere.
Wait, to clarify that, though, like, so is there not such a thing, though, like a certain historic status of a building would prevent that?
It would, it would require design review for an exterior alteration to your building, if it was a historic.
See, they, they can, the plaza is considered like a historic area, and that's why we went through it.
Right. That is, that's a good point, Alex, because that is why that particular permit went before the Planning Commission, and why you see, like, the haberdashery that we had up did not need to go before the Planning Commission. And then other businesses, as has also been pointed out, just didn't put them up and didn't even come to us to get a permit. So.
Yeah, I would say that I am in favor of a design review for plaza businesses, just aesthetic-wise.
It's required. They were only, the one was haberdashery, for some reason slipped through, and they weren't considered in the downtown plaza, but they did fall within the downtown area. I think our design standards are really important. Historically speaking, you always wanted to have a recess entry. Somebody would come up and they have their umbrella, they would close it down, they'd be able to stand underneath, then they would be able to go into the store. So I followed those premises when I looked at the building where Caravan of Dreams is located. And I had two businesses in there originally. So that's why you see two doors. And then Caravan of Dreams decided, when the tenant left on the others, on the left side or the south side, they wanted the whole space. And I looked at many different ideas. I thought, maybe I can move the whole storefront right up and just have so many feet from the sidewalk, and you wouldn't, then you wouldn't have to worry about that. But then, the way the storefront is built, you know, you have glass windows, and, you know, so I think when in the future, when we start looking at, or we won't be looking at it, but the Planning Commission design review portion of it, with new buildings, we're gonna have to look at what, how they are designed, and what problems can happen with that. And I followed, you know, downtown historic ideas, that you always do a recess entry. And that's why I created such a deep one. And I look back on it, and it probably wasn't the wisest thing to do. But you, and then next door, where we have Arcata Artisans, they have a very small one. But originally, that building didn't have a very big one. So each building has a, comes from a different era, a different style. And when we look at where the record store has gone now, that, well, that whole built, that's, one was originally one building. It was Bank of America. It had a terracotta- It had a terracotta facade on it. And then when Bank of America decided they didn't wanna be there anymore, they went over to where they, well, Cal Poly bookstore is now. And so they took off the terracotta facade and they divided it into two buildings. So when you get into the very back of that building, you will see you go downstairs and upstairs to go to the bathroom, and they have a safe on the right-hand side, it's a big safe. And it's just all set differently. And many of their businesses had alleys, and the reason we had alleys is because they would come with their goods, the trucks, and they would open the, now our freight door is always open on the back, but they used to open on the side, pull up right on the edge, and then you'd move the big doors across and you would unload into the back. And now, many of those places are housing. So I can stop talking about historic preservation, but it all has an effect on what's going on and how things were designed and how they're utilized now.
Thank you.
I just have a really quick question. So businesses come and go, and let's say we do set up these hours of operation, what happens when the new business comes in and they have a different hour, different type of business?
I think we set a standard hours of operation that you have to follow when you go in. You know that you have to open your gate at 9:00, you have to close it at 10:00.
The permit runs with the property, not with a particular tenant or business. So the permit would run with the property.
Okay, so could we do something with, not necessarily hours of operation, but when that gate is open? Because obviously, a bar is not gonna be open at 9:00 in the morning.
Well, I don't think that we necessarily have to do anything right now. What I was gonna say is, do you think that, I, you know, I think that we've provided a lot of direction to give it back to the planning commission and see what they come up with.
Yeah, I would just say to clarify, my interpretation of hours of operation was actually operation of the gate, not necessarily.
Not the time they have to be open, yeah, no, absolutely.
That was what I was asking for clarification.
And I will say, you know, to the, to the point about opening the floodgates, we are back up at much higher police staffing levels right now. So there is a much stronger presence in the Valley West area, in the North Town area, and on the plaza. I do drive those areas often first thing in the morning, and the camping part of it is the weather as well, is substantially reduced from where we were even two or three months ago, so.
Yeah, we have, what, Riley, is that?
We do, Officer Riley Tippin is on the plaza. And he is out meeting all the businesses and I think starting to make some, some good change out on the plaza.
That's fantastic. All right, well, I think that we've given some good direction to the planning commission, so unless anybody has anything else about scissors gates.
No, I was going to mention the truth. Now that we have more police officers, I noticed that we don't have this, at 7:00 in the morning, we don't have the same situation that we've had in the past.
Was that a floodgate, scissors gate pun?
All right, so I think we're, are we ready to move, move on?
But I just want, I wanna mention one other thing. COVID affected store hours, and, and we do not have the consistent store hours that we used to have. We're, we're open at 10:00, closed at 6:00 during the week, Sundays from 12:00 to 4:00. And that has all changed. COVID has really changed around our store hours.
All right, thanks, Alex. All right. Is everybody okay if we keep going? We're almost there. Okay, oral and written communication. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss nor take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements, supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or reference to staff, refer to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes. So if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom webinar or press star nine if you're on the phone line and you would like to make public comment. Again, three minutes.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I come to you with a heavy heart. Sort of paraphrasing Lyndon Johnson back when he told the American people he would not run for president. Don't worry, I'm not running for anything. I'm gonna stay right here at the public podium. But the heavy heart I have is what happened this past week up on the campus, which I visited several times at different parts of the day and got involved, and witnessed, and learned, and appreciated the new generation of active people for just causes. It was very disturbing to witness the police activity on the Monday, the 22nd. I was at the campus at two, I mean, last Monday until 9:30 with my umbrellas of understanding, and decided to leave because of the materials I had with me, and I didn't want them to get misused or destroyed, so I did not witness the arrests that took place. But I'm very concerned about the police action, and I would like a police report from our Arcata Police Department to tell how they respond to things that happen on campus and what their involvement was on some of the issues, what the destruction of property by law enforcement on last Monday, of all the tents and my sign that I left at the peace pole. I was not allowed to go see if it was still there. There's a lot of disturbing things that happened, and it wasn't by the people, the students, the young people, and the people wanting great, good change in the world for people suffering terribly. So I just wanna say that out loud. I was there, and the news media is not covering it completely, especially some of our local news media in the city here. And I just think that we need a report from law enforcement about what their plans are for the future, if something was to happen down the hill. So I think it's really, really important to recognize that what happened up on campus was peaceful. There may have been a few people, you know, angry and yelling, or a few people deciding to, you know, spray paint something, but the majority was organized, loving, caring, peaceful, caring, caring people up there, wanting change in our world for the better. So a police report from our chief would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Jeff Harris, Myrtle Town, from Sacramento. Now, today, House of Representatives Bill 6091, the Anti-Semitism Awareness Act, cleared the House of Representatives by a 320-91 vote, which means it should clear the Senate and it should clear the President's office as well. Now, among other things, there is a provision for calling for the harming of Jews in the name of a radical ideology or an extremist view of religion, okay, such as globalize the Intifada, which was in chalk writing, so a week ago, Tuesday. Now, some say Intifada means a shaking off. The Palestinians use it as a sense of an insurrection. What does it mean to globalize the Intifada? Well, it means to attack Jews around the world. I've spoken to folks in the community, and a number have taken that way as well. Okay, now, I actually did call the Office of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Ron Johnson, about this particular issue ostensibly, but I slipped something in there that the occupation was moved out Tuesday morning, and the lady I spoke to, she actually said, "Good," which told me three things. They're very aware of what's going on there. They, it's, they want this, these campus occupations shut down, and it's a priority. And that concurs with what I experienced in talking to some of the officers for that Monday afternoon after acting with some of the people there. I talked to officers, you know, I said, "Hey, can they block the access points? Can they tell people to leave?" And the officers said, "No, no. We're working on it, it's a mess." Tuesday, I talked to some officers, they come all the way from Contra Costa County, which indicates this is a priority, you know, and we talked about some of the foreign actors, people not from the area organizing these events. So there was something I was going to say a few weeks ago. It would have been provocative then, but given that this has made the national news, now it sounds more predictive, even prophetic. I was saying that the, you know, if the fine seats revolution you have there would be a shame if it weren't effective. Well, I talked to one of the rabbis about this, and his thinking was that it wouldn't mollify these folks. They're taking their leave from like East Coast colleges. Okay, now, speaking of prophetic, it has been foretold, has come to pass in accordance with the prophecy of George Orwell, that the Marxists and Islamics have made common cause. And here's a Republican candidate for the Senate, and he speaks of rooting out the internal Marxist threat to our nation, Stanford Israel v. Terra. I spoke to local representatives, Republican Party in Eureka. They believe in supporting Israel. And something that's not generally mentioned is the intellectual property. That's a key point. In fact, I'll say here, for closing, among Nobel Prize winners, 214 and 965 are other Jewish, who are a Jewish parent, that's 22%. Only 15 are Arab Jews, like 10,000 to one over the end of the month.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about everybody's favorite subject that I've been talking about for a long, long time. And I'll remind you, this is our, this is the third mayor that I've had to bring the subject up to, so it started probably January 2022, going to the police department and then having them say, "They're absolutely right about, as far as the safety element of the mufflers and being, you know, violation, and we're having a lot of them in the city." And the police said, you know, at that time, "We don't have the, we don't have the support, funding, go to the council." Gone to the council, actually, I went to the council, but I did write you a nice letter in the beginning from the standpoint of describing, you know, the harm, you know, statistics of, of what it does to people and their sleep and effects on their heart, and, you know, it was a pretty good study. And I appreciate Stacy did, responded to that and saying, "I totally understand, I have the same issue, but we're not gonna be able to do anything about it because sort of just saying the exact same thing as the officer, said that we don't have the funding for it." And so patiently, she did say that hopefully, maybe in the future, we'll rebuild our police. So I kinda hung in there for a long time, and then I kinda said, "Well, it's kind of like time's up, maybe I need to go to the state." And then I, then I did have Stacy come out to the house at that time and gave me a heads-up about, you know, "We're rebuilding our police department, and so hopefully, this is gonna be dealt with." And I kept on looking, looking around, and nothing really was changing. So I did have a heart-to-heart with Karen last meeting after we were gone, and she basically said, which I appreciate she was honest, "But nothing has been done about it, not, not anything." So I guess I'm asking you right now, like, what's the plan? Is there no plan? Because, you know, I'm pretty frustrated about it, and I just wanna see what my options are, whether there's, you know, there's gonna be some movement or not on this. And it is a law, and we're supposed to be enforcing the laws. I mean, you guys, Lord an oath to that. And I'd also point out that, you know, it's, we get a lot of money from the state and the federal government. Just look how lucky we are with the wastewater treatment plant, that most of that money's coming from the state and the federal government. And I'm sure that they really want to have their laws, you know, enforced. So you gotta look at it from a lot of different ways, that how important this is, and they're not going to be, I'm just gonna tell you, they're not going to be happy about this, that I have to go and explain this story. And I don't really wanna do it that way, but it's just like, I mean, what am I supposed to do? It's like, it's, it's over two years and no, no action at all. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. As I understand it, on May 29th, the full council is going to start the review and potential adoption process for the environmental impact report, the general plan, the gateway area plan, and the gateway code. As we know, two council members will be required to recuse themselves because of California Fair Political Practices ruling. There is a big question of how this will work. In the environmental impact report, the gateway and non-gateway issues are completely mixed. I have some ideas about how this can be done to avoid the possibility of any legal challenges in the future. For those of you who will be voting and the two who are potentially interested, there's a link on ArcataOne.com at your portal, ArcataOne.com/CC, with specific issues in the gateway code that are there now. There's been no attempt on the part of the planning commission to correct many of these issues. They include things like, there are no bathrooms, there are no bus stops, there's no transit center. The booners and linear park is not, there's no actual designation for them. There is no inside lockers for tenants or employees, as was promised. And there's completely inadequate what's called short-term bike parking. As an example, if there's a restaurant that was the size of the D Street Community Center, which holds about 140 diners at one time, the existing code says that there'd have to be bicycle parking for five, five bicycle places for the diners and one for the staff. This is inadequate. I think it sends the wrong message to what we're trying to do here. What I'm looking at with the gateway code is not my personal ideas, it's to have it include what the planning commission has said they wanted, what the council has said they wanted. It does not do that now. I've said that we need a solid, objective code that will support the policies of the gateway area plan. I don't know how you're gonna be looking at this for the approval, whether it's gonna be go to you and bounce back to the commission. In my estimation, it'd be impossible to pass it in its current form. It needs at least four or five sessions on the planning commission level to get it straightened out. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more in-person comments? If there are, come on up.
Hello, I'm Nick Saubern. Been a resident of Arcata for a while now. So anyway, I participated in the protests on campus. I think I'm considered an outside agitator by some of the law enforcement, people that are making statements to the media. I live in Arcata, so it's like a ridiculous term that's being thrown around. But I wanted to point out that last week, the faculty of California Polytechnic Humboldt has voted to, no confidence in President Tom Jackson, and the vote was 170 versus three. So there's practically no confidence in the president of the university and his chief of staff. And I think that the Arcata C Council ought to support the faculty and the students in light, in light of the extreme gravity of what's going on in Gaza. The students had to rebel against the older generation that's running the system because the system is heading for a very dystopian future where all these weapons are being used indiscriminately, guided by artificial intelligence computers against civilians. I can't really convey all this stuff that I've seen in videos. I urge everybody to see some videos of what's going on in Gaza if you haven't. If you're a human being, you would actually care about other human beings. And I think that the right move for the C Council would be to cancel the, at least temporarily cancel the mutual aid agreement between the Arcata Police Department and the HSU Police Department, because I think that as long as Tom Jackson is the president and the, over 95% of the faculty has no confidence in him, I think that, at least temporarily, until Tom Jackson resigns, the mutual aid agreement should be suspended in support of the faculty and the students. And one military person shouldn't be running anything.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do. We have one speaker. Go ahead, call in user. There you go.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the work you do. John Emig from Valley West, and I'm speaking to you tonight about the attractive hazard that the pump station creates on the south end of the Courtyards apartment complex. It's city property, kinda nestled in amongst a bunch of private property, and it creates an ALCO with people who are sleeping now. And there's obscene graffiti that the young families have to see now, and I would call the city. see now. And I've called the city already about it, and it's been a couple weeks and nothing's been done yet. So I'm coming before you once again to petition for more, or any at all, police patrols through the Courtyards apartment complex. And I also want to express my gratitude. I see that ground has literally been broken at the community center to put in the ADA compliant facilities. And so thank you for that. And that's about all. I'll make it quick.
Thank you. No other public comment. All right, well, let's move on to council and staff reports. City Manager Deemer, I know we had one email that you answered, so thank you, but there's been a couple comments. Will you just maybe recap the involvement that APD had?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
I would be happy to speak to a couple of the questions that came up tonight, just specifically in terms of the response support that APD has provided to Cal Poly, I'll say for the last week and a half. We do have mutual aid agreements, as has been talked about tonight. Those mutual aid agreements, we were called for backup on Monday, which would have been April 22nd, and arrived up on to what could only be described as a fairly chaotic scene. I think there's been several videos that all of us have watched. After that evening, we provided, we really were not up on campus for a few days. And then we did provide support when they started to set up sort of a perimeter barrier at Harp Street and at Library Circle. On Saturday, we had officers stationed at both of those places for a period of time, probably around noon to six or seven PM. And then on Sunday, we were for a short time at Library Circle, predominantly at Harp Street. We did not have any police involvement in the ultimate activity that happened on early morning of Tuesday, late Monday night. And then we have had some call for service just today to help with some additional patrols. What I had shared with many people in the community that reached out, as well as most of the council, is we are all very small departments in this region. Mutual aid is integral to everyday operation in policing. We call on mutual aid and we provide mutual aid between the Sheriff, Cal Poly, Highway Patrol, Eureka, and at times our smaller agencies such as Fortuna, Riodell, Ferndale, if not every day, every week, for sure. We would not be able to police in this region at the staffing levels that all of us hold if we did not have strong mutual aid agreements. So while I do understand the calls for reducing or eliminating mutual aid for a period of time, my belief has always been that, that law enforcement and those arrangements are so critical to the safety of our community, that it is an area that should supersede politics when they can. So I think that we all had concerns about that initial response on Monday night. We all voiced those. Those were all taken into consideration in planning. And I think in part, that's why you did not see much local law enforcement in that response that evening, on the evening then of Monday night, early Tuesday morning. But it is important for our officers to continue to respond to all of our neighboring agencies for the health and safety of our community. We will be the next one to make that call. And we do need them to respond here in Arcata.
Could I just clarify? So our law enforcement, APD, was not involved in any of the arrests? Is that correct?
They were not. We were not up on site that night.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. All right, let's do council reports. I thought, okay, we have council reports. We started with Councilmember White last time, so we'll start with Councilwoman Schaefer. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so some updates here. Just quickly from our CEA. We had, we moved our meeting because a lot of our staff and two of our board members went on the trip to Massachusetts, which I will maybe talk a little bit about, but probably there's a lot to say. So, but we, just something that is related Arcata-wise, though it is not directly in the Arcata city limits, we did, our CEA will be purchasing the power from the Foster Clean Power Solar Array that is just right outside of the Arcata city limits in the county jurisdiction, down Foster Street, kind of down towards the bottoms. It's a really cool solar project that's gonna also include pollinator habitat. And so there's kind of two different phases to that solar project that our CEA will be buying the power from. And then also, lots of awesome grants coming through our CEA as well, that we're working on a grant with all of the local, small rural fire stations, to be able to provide support, to add solar with storage to a lot of those really remote fire stations that are out in the middle of nowhere, Whitethorne, Alderpoint, out to Orleans, et cetera. So really cool opportunities there. And then in addition to that, had the opportunity to travel with some of my council colleagues and the county, kind of headed by County Economic Development, to Massachusetts to see the Vineyard Offshore Wind Project there and kind of get some education surrounding just everything that has gone into that over their years, their planning, their community involvement, engagement. We got to meet other elected officials from Martha's Vineyard, who directly worked on those projects and helping, you know, get the community involved and get stakeholders involved. And then also get to boat out, like, almost twenty miles offshore and be able to see it and see what it looks like and kind of see the view from the shore and everything like that. And so if anybody out there wants to talk more specifically about it, I could probably talk about the whole trip for like, over an hour. So reach out. But it was really just cool to see all the different pieces of the community that it's gotten involved in. We got to go to the Education Learning Lab at Bristol Community College, which was super awesome, and see where they bring in fifth graders and high schoolers and college students, all to be able to learn about wind energy. And we got to like, do VR, climb a wind turbine, and do like, maintenance is like, one of the first ways that they start to train technicians and stuff. So it was super cool to see. I'd be happy to talk to folks about it. And yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. So a couple of chamber announcements. There is the mixer tomorrow from 5:30 to seven at Urban Market. And then also, looking for volunteers for Oyster Fest, which will be on June 15th. And you can sign up on the website. And I would just, you know, it's a huge event to take on. And this will be the first time it's landed squarely in the chambers, correct, in a while. So if you, you know, if you want it to be a success, jump in and make it happen. It's an event that, you know, sometimes gets more criticism that it does, you know, volunteer. So if you wanna see it go smoothly, volunteer, help it run smoothly. And just, we have had, you know, we had some students from Cal Poly that were here. We've, I think, you know, we've received some phone calls and emails asking for different levels of intervention, I guess, in what's happening up there. And from my personal perspective is, I just, I'm gonna take a beat and I'm gonna, you know, watch. There are, there are plenty of people, aside from the president, there are plenty of people on campus that, in administration, that absolutely care about the students and have great hearts and, you know, great sense of equity and justice. So I, I just think this is, you know, this is an internal issue up there. Is it affecting our community? Absolutely. But, you know, if it, if the roles were reversed and we were, luckily we're not, but if we were having a, you know, some serious problems here, I would like the courtesy of letting us get our, see what we could do to get our own house in order before, you know, they were weighing in on us. And so that's just what I kind of wanna, you know, put that out there. Let's, you know, give them a chance to, to solve those problems that are happening up there.
Thank you. I too had the opportunity to go to Boston to look at Offshore Wind. It was an amazing, jam-packed trip. I really appreciated how Vineyard went out of their way to gather such an amazing cohort of stakeholders, from tribal leaders to educators, elected officials, workforce development, just so many people with their shared experiences. And just hear real input from the community to the, the good and the bad. So again, I am looking forward to talking with it, to talking about it. It was pretty amazing to get miles out into the ocean and see the turbines close. It's pretty amazing stuff. It was quite an opportunity. I had HWMA meeting, I think, before, before the last time I've spoken. But, you know, we're going through the budget process right now, kind of mid-year review and deciding what we wanna do. But definitely one of the things that was very important to the HWMA Board is to add more funds to support community cleanups and community education. So I'm really glad about that. The farmer's market is now closed to traffic. It's been very successful and very beautiful. And it makes my heart really happy to see people walking around and happy. There's live music every week now. So go support your local farmers. And I think I had mentioned it when we were talking about meetings, but yes, I was elected as a delegate for the Democratic National Convention. So I'll be going to Chicago the third week of August. I'm really excited to be a force for good. And yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to mention, you mentioned HWMA, and that we have two large pickups a year, if you have a garbage service. And I noticed today, when I was on 11th Street, that there are two couches and a mattress, et cetera, on the street. And I'm thinking, there must be a way that we could let people actually understand, property owners understand, who could tell their tenants that we do have large pickups, and that they can coordinate that and make that work. So that was one thing right off the bat. I know that we have an individual in our community who's really concerned about loud car exhaust. And I think I saw the car that might be a culprit. And it's white with two exhausts right side by side. And I saw that on Monday when I was on the plaza. I got a phone call to go on the plaza at six o'clock, where the students were gonna be walking up to Cal Poly. And I joined that. And then I saw this car. So if you can find it.
First one.
And it was going so fast, I could not see the license plate. But good luck. So one of the other things is I went to Redwood Rising yesterday, and it's an effort of four counties. You know, it might be really interesting for us to have that presentation here, because Stacy has seen it, because they, they did it at HCOG. Maybe they've done it at all the JPAs, I'm not too sure. But it might be interesting just for an overall informational view of how they're looking forward to, the governor has, I think it's thirteen places in the state, which is like Redwood Rising, is working with four counties, looking at the economic development for the future and how we're going to be able to manage. Another item is, today I had my HTA meeting, and they're getting ready to design the area for the hydrogen bus. And also, we have a new hydrogen bus that's on order. And they get, had, they're promoting Ride Humboldt. And so we all had to take pictures, and we were there with Bigfoot. And, and there's a whole promotional event going on all over the county, trying to promote, you know, Ride Humboldt. And it's going to be, you'll find it all on the buses soon. It'll be, the ticket will be the same. It'll be this whole image about moving forward. And they're very happy with the ridership that we have out in Valley West and our special, our special route. So I think that's all.
I wish the white car was our only violator, but good that you were trying to get, you know, that license plate. I don't have a lot to report. I didn't have, wasn't as exciting as my colleagues going to check out the Vineyard Offshore Wind Project, but I'm really excited to hear Sarah's one-hour recap and something from Meredith as well. And didn't you also go?
I also did.
Yeah.
They were talking about it, so I just let it go. But, you know, of course, I'm interested, I was interested in all the networking. It was really wonderful to see what it looks like. Of course, it's a different area than ours. They have a shallow base and we don't. But I think it's a good economic development, future endeavor for us. And we're gonna have to start dealing with jobs and the type of jobs in the future that are gonna be available, and be able to put that together as, you know, like College of the Redwoods and Cal Poly, thinking about those jobs for the future and being able to get people to think about it.
I'm looking forward to hearing about all of this. Thanks. I attended the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission, got some updates from the various jurisdictions and the county. In fact, our county supervisor, Natalie Roy, was also able to go on that trip, too. So I'm sure I'll be getting some updates from them. And somebody mentioned community cleanup. So I just wanna talk about, May is a month of rebirth, of renewed vitality and energy. So just wanna invite you to bring that energy this Sunday to a community cleanup out in Valley West Park. There will be over three hundred iris bulbs we will be giving out to all participants to beautify our Arcata neighborhoods all over. I hope to see you there.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. It's really important. May is Bike Month, and we forgot to say that. So on behalf of all of us, there's, I think it's Humboldt Bike Month.org. It's May 1st. So anyways, check that out.
Well, I also think if we wanna mention something, they're gonna be looking at K Street and looking at the development on K Street and how that can be handled. And we did get a letter concerning bicycles, about cars parking in the bicycle lanes, and how can we deal with that in a different way. So maybe something about Bicycle Month.
Let's talk about dates of future meetings.
You got a lot.
You have a few.
Did we? Yeah. So let's pull out our, I feel like we might have discussed these last time.
Yeah, I think these are all, should be set.
So we'll, you will get a calendar invite to add that May 9th meeting.
May 9th at four o'clock.
At four o'clock. And then Vice Mayor Solomon and I will have something on the 20th.
20th.
Okay. And we'll get a calendar invite for that, too. And then we have the 5:30 meeting on the 22nd for City Manager interviews. May 28th, to once again discuss city managers. And then the 29th is a special meeting, the big one.
On the general plan.
Yep.
Yeah. So the, the schedule on that night, we will do a light introduction of a few of our budget items, just to make sure we're not missing any of the council priorities as we finalize that. And then we'll do heavy budget on June 15th. And we will do kind of
June 12th.
June 12th. Yes, thank you, June 12th.
June 15th is Oyster Fest.
That is what, yeah. And we will all be at Oyster Fest, yeah.
[laughing]
So just because it came up tonight, actually, at our next meeting, which would be May 15th, we will just do an informational piece for the city council on changes that the Planning Commission have suggested since the draft came out. The Planning Commission is hoping if they finalize those on the 14th, then we will just overview, just to, you know, get your head starting to think prior to that May 29th night. And then, you know, the hopeful time that you would be considering adoption of any of these items would be, hmm, it's gonna be that second meeting in July, since we just canceled the first meeting tonight, so.
One, just to remind, I, on the 29th, I will be here at, you know, soon as I can, but probably at seven.
And, and just a reminder, too, because we brought up that meeting, I will be, I will not be here at our next meeting, May 15th. It's the annual time I get to take all of my lovely high schoolers to somewhere that's not here and hang out with teenagers for two nights. So we'll be going to Sacramento to look at colleges.
And I will be out June 5th for my son's eighth grade graduation.
So on the 29th, we'll probably start with gateway items?
That sounds great.
Yeah, yeah. So let's adjourn in honor of City Clerk Dory tonight. Thank you so
much. You are free. Thank you again. Really, really appreciate you. Enjoy.